Order, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none. No other comments on that, we will deem the agenda as approved. We have a couple announcements, one is a proclamation that will go up on the town's site for April 24th, which is Human Values Awareness Day in the town of Bridgewater, and there's going to be a walk for human values in various locations around the country. I don't think we're doing one here, but as is now our custom, the proclamation will be posted online. Council announcements, are there any announcements councillors wish to make? Council Graves?
Today I had the great pleasure to take volunteer representative Catherine Butler and her guest Shirley Beers to the 44th Annual Provincial Volunteers Ceremony in Helibax. Catherine had a great time and she was in very good company. We would like to thank you on behalf of the town of Bridgewater, Lunenburg County, and Nova Scotia, thank you for all that you do, the volunteers. Certainly, the province is powered by volunteers and we appreciate it.
You were laughing.
I thought you did.
She was in very good company and Counsel Graves took her to the meetings. She was in very good company, I know what you meant. Sorry, you're a good guy. Counsel Darwin, did you want to talk about what happened today?
Yes, I did, your worship. This morning at 11:00 hour, we gathered as a community to lay a wreath on all of the Canadians who fought during World War I, including the Battle of Vimy Ridge. In 2003, the government of Canada declared April the 9th to be Vimy Ridge Day to honor and remember the Battle of Vimy Ridge, which took place in 1917 during the First World War. Hill 145, the highest and most important feature of the ridge, is where the Vimy monument now stands. The gleaming white marble and halting sculptures of the memorial unveiled in 1936 stand as a reminder of 11,285 Canadians killed in France who have no known graves. And I truly believe that for more than 752,000 members of the Royal Canadian Legion, is our responsibility and duty to remember Vimy Ridge forever and again.
Right, thank you for that. It was nice to have some clear blue sky today for that.
It was cold, I'm going to tell you.
So, thank you for that. Any other councillors have any items? I would, I think it's important recognizing the tragedy that occurred in Humboldt Saskatchewan over the weekend. If you might indulge me and perhaps we could just rise for one minute of silence. I did a couple of interviews today and what really struck me is this could have been our community. We have many, many teams that travel from Bridgewater, whether it's the barracudas or cheerleaders, or it's hockey or baseball, and now they don't all travel in a bus together. But, we have to remember that this is another community, in the middle of this country is 6,000 people that have lost. Now I think they're up to 15 young people. And, what we do best as Canadians is support each other. I don't think there's another country that reaches out to, to other communities, people that we've never met, like we do. So, if, again, if you will, if we could just maybe stand for one minute and just recognize a moment of silence for Humboldt Saskatchewan. Thank you. Hearing no other announcements, we're a little before 6:10, but I think our delegation is here to talk about a food truck rally, and these are members of the Farmers Market Association, so come on down to the podium and you've got 10 minutes to let us know about this, this event.
Yes, my name is Rita Landgraf, I'm here on behalf of the Farmers Market. And, before I begin, I want to acknowledge what the town has actually already done for us. We have received support and been able to buy tents for the market, for the music and the seating area, and we were able to get the sign that says "Home of the Bridgewater Farmers Market" with the town's help. And, the town has been helpful in putting our information in the bridge, the waterly newsletters, so that's been very good for us. I want to talk first a little bit also about the history of the market. So, over the last nine years, it's had its ups and downs. When we started, it was like build it and they will come, and we had a busy parking lot full of vendors and, and customers, but by the third year, it was near collapse, it was six vendors left, and it looked pretty dire. We had lost vendors to more established markets, 2011, 2010, 2012, it was Wolfville and Hubbard's mostly. But, we persevered and we have, we have reached some milestones. We are a member of Farmers Markets Nova Scotia, FMNS, we're certified Farmers Market now. This has given us access to training for vendors, for market organizers, and also to best practices for Farmers Markets. And, also, over the years, our finances have been, become more stable, partly because of the training received through FMNS. We have been able to increase our revenue and higher table fees, more vendors. In 2012, sorry, in 2017, we had 12 vendors each week, with a peak of 19 in August. And, all of this extra revenue, we've spent on promoting the market. And, with it, with the exception of the summer student that we have been able to hire through summer grants, we are still only volunteer run, we don't have any staff, any market staff. And, we've also increased the number of operating days. In 2016, we added two Christmas markets, in 2017, we added two market days in October, it was the first time we went beyond Thanksgiving weekend. And, we increased our Christmas markets days to four instead of two, and it was very well received. And, last year, we did our first major fundraiser, which was last year's food truck party. And, you may not be aware of this, but very few Farmers Markets operate on table fees alone. Many raise as much as 50% of their operating budget through other means. So, this was a very important event for us. And, so, for 2018, we would like to repeat the food truck party. It gives us great exposure to, to the public, makes people aware of the opening day for the market, and it brings in some money for us. Now, I've said we're a small volunteer organization, we have 12 members and a few extra vendors, so there's a lot of cost associated with putting on this event. You know, we have to make commitments ahead of time to book advertising, to get insurance for the event, bring in portable toilets and things like that. So, we've been in contact with town staff and have been requesting in-kind support for some of these expenses. So, there, relating to the food truck party, there's three things that we're asking for: portable toilets, picnic tables, and garbage receptacles and removal. So, we're hoping that the town is able to move some of the portable toilets that are around town and put them, put them in our area for the weekend. And, as far as picnic tables are concerned, the more, the better. Feedback from last time was people were looking for places to sit, and, well, last time was our first time, so we hadn't informed the town that we might need the picnic tables that are normally in the parking lot earlier than usual, and so, there was very little seating, but the more, the better. And, garbage receptacles and the removal, we were lucky last year that somebody picked up the piles of bags that we had and just threw their company, they said, "Okay, we'll, we'll get GEs to come and put it in our bins," so to speak. But, that's really the, the biggest drawback of an event like the food truck party is that it creates incredible amount of garbage. It's, I went back the next day last year, and it was, even though we had thought we had cleaned up, it just, there was a lot. So, we need a lot of receptacles and then that needs to be taken off-site. So, we're hoping that the town can help with that. Apart from that, pavement in the parking lot has been deteriorating to the point where it's really actually a safety hazard. It was really bad last year, and I'm sure it's not better after another winter. We're also wondering if it's possible, if the town has a planter or a container, that we can put some plants, flowers in to put under the sign for the Farmers Market, to just, you know, beautify the location a bit and give it a little more interest so people will notice the sign that's above it. Probably would have to be something heavy and can't be kicked over. And, we also feel strongly that the market needs directional signage, so in strategic locations through towns, so people can find the market, and that they're reminded during the week that there is a market and when the market is. There's many Nova Scotian towns, Yarmouth, Antigone, Shunenburg, they have directional signage for the market. And, lastly, there's, we think there's a growing interest in our market. Our newsletter subscriptions have increased by, I don't know, 50, 70% over the winter when we weren't doing anything. So, I think there's a, there's a real interest for the market and support. And, we also think that the market can be a partner in the economic renewal of the downtown business core. So, if anybody wants to talk to us, if we can strike up a partnership, or just figure out what works for the downtown, for the market, we're always open to talk. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Questions from council? I know I have a question probably for staff in terms of the wayfinding signage that we Is the market part of that? Is there?
I don't believe the Farmers Market is specifically downtown, I'm just checking on that.
Okay. Counsel Graves?
Rita, as this is a televised event, when is the food truck party?
Oh, yes, I forgot to mention that. It's May 20th, it's the Sunday of the Victoria Day weekend.
Sunday, May 20th?
Yeah, 4:00 to 8:00 PM.
Was there last year, was it who?
Yeah, we have more trucks this year, 12 instead of eight that we had last year.
So, do you know what kind of food is being offered yet?
Oh, it's all.
Only because this is televised.
Yeah, it's all over the place. There's some Asian, Jamaican, there's your regular barbecue and hot, you know, hamburger and hot dog, fish and chips, it's a big smorgasbord.
Great.
Other questions from members of council? Counsel Durbin?
I'm not sure, maybe you can help me. I know it's on King Street, I've been there, but you probably block it off from Dominion to Empire?
Yes.
Doing that, you have a permit?
I've applied for a permit, I don't have it yet.
So, that gives you the whole street to, to make it easier?
Yes.
And, has there been any thought of partnering with any business opportunities to make the Farmers Market a year-round operation versus a season?
There has been, there has been talk about that from different corners. One issue we have when going year-round is that we don't have very many people with greenhouses. And, so, if we can't provide fresh produce year-round, people just don't come, they, they don't come for just meat, or, you know, some baked goods, they, they want more than that. And, we, in this area, we don't have that. And, we're, we're a bit at the mercy of the weather as well. Having said that, I think it would definitely be possible to go to Christmas. And, I'm hearing of more and more people who are putting in greenhouses, so it would be, once we have a steady supply, I think it's definitely possible. And, the right location.
Great, thank you.
I mean, being outside in the parking lot, a lot of us like being outside, but it also limits what you can do. Like, we can't, it's hard to, for us to get food vendors because you have to have running water, or, you know, pressurized hot and cold water. Well, that's a big deal, at least you have to store it, you know, you have to fill it up, and then you have to store it during the week when you're not using it, and so, there's some challenges, but, yeah, it's a, it's a possibility.
So, any other, Counsel Graves?
Do we need a formal ask as opposed to a verbal ask?
So, it sounds like they've been in contact with staff, and I'm assuming that staff is going to come back with something for us. We usually discuss events like this, and it's going to be budget implications for in kind?
Yeah, I guess there were a couple of items, and Rita, it looks like the parking lot itself, if those were going to be part of staff's list.
I think that's, regardless of the, of whatever happens in the parking lot, it's not a good situation.
With regards to the pavement?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There was, we had an additional $5,000 in the budget, but it's been removed for actual patching in that parking lot.
I don't remember taking that out.
Okay. I guess to follow up on Counsel Graves' question, could it be a formal request that we could see this in more detail?
Well, I think, I think there has to be, because I think there's, there's two components to it, right? So, we need, we need the formal ask for the event.
Mm-hmm.
And, I think, if there's a need for the parking lot, I think there needs to be a, I think we need that kind of itemized, if it's like the planter and the parking lot, I think we might want to separate the two so that we're not debating one that's holding up the other.
Right, right.
So, perhaps in contact with, I guess it's going to be Mr. Feener?
Mm-hmm.
If, let him, maybe talk to him about the infrastructure pieces of it, and then there should be an ask to council for the event itself.
Okay, yeah, I can, I can do that.
Perfect, and then we'll just, we'll put it on an agenda soon, so then, because the date's coming up quickly, so.
Yeah, is there a specific form I should use, or can I just write it in an email?
Just in an email would be fine. Perfect, great, any other questions? No, thank you.
Thank you.
And, I know that we have another delegation here from the playground, so not on the agenda, so you don't get the full 10 minutes, but if you want to come and, and give us an update, that would be great.
Hi there, so we just have a quick, a follow-up to our presentation from a few weeks ago, where we had the ask for the reserve funds for the playground, and there were still some questions surrounding a few other things. So, it's obvious that more details about fundraising was one of the issues that councillors wanted to hear a little bit more about. So, fundraising began about two and a half years ago, and while we've made a lot of headway, the cost of the project is substantial, so to fundraise the entire thing is quite difficult. Funds have come from various avenues. First, the committee has worked tirelessly putting on numerous events and campaigns that were supported by this community and school families. A few of them was a Yuck Yuck Comedy Night, which was a really good success, it was really funny and it was well-attended, it was a sold-out crowd. Frozen Blueberries, Nurture Roots campaigns, student dances, raffles, craft fair, barbecues, people on the committee, we even went to pack groceries at Inferals to try to raise some funds. The Home and School Group have assisted with funds from the annual BES Fund Day. We've entered prize contests and have online funding set up as well through the school board, and it's also on our school webpage. We've solicited local businesses and who have made many donations and that have come in, they've been trickling in. Community clubs such as Kiwanis, Kinsman, and Alliance have also contributed to our cause. Some of them are ongoing, the Kinsman, we work together with them to run the Chase the Ace at the local public house every Tuesday night. And, we've been applying to all the applicable government and corporate grants. We've been having some difficulty with this getting started, it's one of those things that you kind of have to have the project on the go before you can actually get funding, but then how do you get on the go? So, now that we have a bit put in the playground, we're hoping that we're in good standing for the grants. We have three outstanding applications, and we're just hoping to hear after the provincial budget is passed. So, not only has the fundraising been, the fundraising been tedious, but the more fundraising efforts that are directed toward the playground, the less we have for funds available for classrooms in our school, which is really difficult, we're robbing Peter in Cape Falls, so to speak. So, a lot of the extras that we provide for students at our school comes from fundraising within the school. So, when these funds are going solely towards the playground, then things are taken away from, from other things, from classrooms, such as extra supplies and class trips, that kind of a thing, has to be worked out in another way. The money set aside by the town will be very helpful, and as construction season is here, we again urgently request the funds to be confirmed so that we know what we can accomplish for this year, this building year. We understand the responsibility with allocating taxpayer and town funds, and have heard your concerns about being viewed as the first-in contributor, but at this pivotal point in the project, we can assure you that there's support coming in after a long period of many, many other avenues we've been trying. Other assurances for you on the risk management is another thing, liability, maintenance, and safety programs. We, I think you've been given a letter by the school board, if I'm correct, regarding the maintenance. So, the playground, it's a real town recreational and social hub, so we're really hoping for your support to help make this outdoor space and help make our town a better place.
Any questions from members of council? This is on our agenda to reconsider this evening, so this will come back to us tonight.
Perfect, thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that wish to come before council? No, hearing none. We'll move on to minutes, you have the March 26 regular council meeting minutes before you, any questions or corrections on those? There was a correction, you sent that out.
Yes.
So, that was taken care of, thank you. No, hearing none. We seem to be unanimous that there's no issues, so we'll deem the minutes as passed. At 7 o'clock, we will go into our budget deliberations, so we'll just carry on with this. Reports and recommendations, Lunenburg County Senior Safety Program, we have an update from Shawna Brown, and I think David Walker is here as well to present to us.
Thanks very much, your worship, and staff, and members of the public. I am currently the Chair of Safe Communities Lunenburg County, and it's our mission to continually improve the safety of individuals and communities in Lunenburg County by enhancing a culture of safety and wellness, either through initiatives of Safe Communities Lunenburg County, or through partnerships or support of other initiatives as well. Under that umbrella are four working groups currently. The Bridgewater and Area Age Friendly Committee, Falls Prevention Committee, a Road Safety Committee, and really the committee we're focusing on tonight, the Senior Safety Program. The Lunenburg County Senior Safety Advisory Partnership is the committee that is, I guess, operationally handling that particular segment of our workload for us. The Chair of that is Counselor Penny Carver from the, the town of Mahone Bay, they're representatives from five municipal units, both the Bridgewater Police Service, the RCMP, as some other agencies recommended, represented as well. We certainly want to thank Counselor Jennifer McDonald for her time and effort with the committee, it was certainly a valuable contribution, we appreciate it very much. I also want to thank the Finance Department for the town of Bridgewater, who very graciously provide the financial stewardship of the money we bring in, they look after making sure that the bills are paid and things are handled properly, we very much appreciate that. And certainly Acting Chief Feener and the Bridgewater Police Service for, for housing the program in this area, and in conjunction with the detachment of the RCMP, making sure that resources are available that can be utilized for this, this program. That's sort of the governance overview, and the specific ask will come at the end, but now I'd invite Shawna to come up and offer some thoughts to you, some insight on exactly what this program is about and how meaningful it is for, for our residents.
Thank you, David, and thank you for having us tonight. I'll keep this short and sweet, because I could talk about this for a long time. Our organization is a community-based organization, and we're one of 12 programs throughout the province, so there are 12 senior safety programs throughout Nova Scotia. And, our formal, I suppose, what we formally do is provide information and referrals to seniors. We do public education in regards to elder abuse, and things like scams and frauds, and we talk about fall prevention and general safety with seniors. That's kind of the formal definition of what we do. But, the sort of the, the meat and potato of what we do in the day-to-day job is that we fill in the gaps where other agencies or organizations can't help seniors. And, what I mean by that is that there are certain, when we have organizations like the Nova Scotia Health Authority, or other government agencies, they've got very sort of specific guidelines in how they can help people, and what they can go into, and the type of buildings that they can enter. Being a community organization, the beauty of that for us is that we can do all those things that other people can't do. For example, we have a lot of hoarders on the south shore here in Lunenburg County and in the town of Bridgewater. A lot of those people are seniors who require home care in their daily needs, their personal care, in their homekeeping, in making their meals. But unfortunately, a lot of community agencies won't go into that situation because of health and safety issues for their workers. What we are able to do is to go in there and work with the people directly in making their situation better. That might even just be me trying to find $150 from another community agency so that they can have their bathroom cleaned, so that home care will come in and provide them with care. So, we have, we do very specific work with seniors. We have a lot of seniors in this community, we have a lot of seniors throughout Lunenburg County who are illiterate, so we spend a lot of time filling out forms for them. That might sound like a really trivial matter, but if somebody hasn't done a tax return for three or four years, or five years, or even 10 years, that means they lose out on some funding, their, their pension. some funding, their pension. So we take them to tax clinics. Transportation is a great issue for seniors. I had the pleasure last month of being with a member of Bridgewater Town here who's looking after the transportation, the young woman who's...
Mackenzie.
Mackenzie. And I, we were talking about how important that one service is to the seniors that I work with, that I see on a weekly basis, getting to doctor's appointments, getting to shops, getting to see family members, socializing. So on, I would like to thank the town of Bridgewater for that service and what it does for the seniors in this town. But I want to thank you for the support that you show, the program that I currently work for, and the support that Bridgewater Police Services gives to this program. I have done a lot of work with various community organizations throughout my career, but I have to say that this one program, and I'm only doing this in an acting position right now because the Senior Safety Coordinator is on parental leave, but what I can say is that the work that this program is able to offer the seniors of this community is one of the most important roles that I've ever been involved in because it makes such a difference in the lives of our seniors. We don't do tremendous work, you know, we don't do big jobs, but we do little things that actually really, really matter to the well-being of our seniors. So I thank you very much for the support that you give us, for, as David said, keeping us on track financially, but just your general support in making sure that this program continues. So thank you. And if you have any questions or comments or concerns, please, I'd love to talk more about this because there's a whole range of issues that face our seniors here in this town, so thank you very much.
Questions from members of council? Deputy Mayor Tanner?
Yes.
Shona, or David, Shona probably is more appropriate. I'm sorry. Your number of home visits and your number of referrals are steadily growing over the last three years, quite a dramatic jump.
Yes.
But compared to our regional partners like MoDC, MoDL, and so on, are the numbers in Bridgewater rising stead, higher or quicker than those, or at the same pace? Like, I mean, we hear a lot about more and more seniors moving into Bridgewater, the town of Bridgewater, so I'm just curious if that also relates to the volume locally, so to speak. Does that make sense?
Yes, I would, I would say so, absolutely. One thing that we don't do in this program really is advertise ourselves because we're only, we're a one-person show, and if we did start to advertise, we would be completely and utterly overwhelmed. But what I have to say is that the demographic, the population that we're serving, we mainly are serving seniors who are living at or just below the poverty line.
Right.
So if we have seniors moving in who are retired professionals, we don't usually see them.
Sure, sure.
Yeah.
Other questions, Council Graves?
Just one of the figures that Shona, in terms of nature of referrals, 25% are elder abuse, is that correct?
Yep.
Wow. Just wow.
Yep.
Wow.
Yep.
Yes, it's alarming, very.
And elder abuse, it's a big wide definition. That could be partner abuse, that could be financial abuse from a family member, neighbors, children, you name it.
Disturbing.
It is, yeah, it is, it's very disturbing, absolutely, yeah.
Other questions?
Thank you.
Really, the vision for this program goes back a lot of years, and former Police Chief Brent Crowhurst was the sort of person that had that vision, and I remember when it first came to the police board, we really wondered, well, where are we going with this and whatnot? And I think, as Shona has mentioned, success breeds success. I think we've been unbelievably fortunate in Lunenburg County with the senior safety officers who have served this program over the number of years. But it doesn't come free, as we all know, and you've already heard tonight, nothing comes free. There's always a cost to things. Program funding to offer this program without advertising it really too well is around $64,000. And there's three sources of funding that the Safe Communities goes after on behalf of Senior Safety Program. Obviously, the province is a big funder, and for a number of years, the province offered $20,000 per program. A lot of frustration with the programs because you had to fill out the grant applications every year. Grant applications can be one-pagers, unfortunately, this is not one of them, so there's a lot more pages. It was taking a lot of time from our senior safety officers that could be better used with the clients in our county. Chris Acome and I sat on a provincial committee last year. The province made a significant move to three-year committed funding, developed new matrix for outcomes that we all bought into, and so the program here is delivering the same deliverables as the program in Kings County and so on, and they also increased their funding from $20,000 a year to $25,000 a year. The second source of funding is municipalities, and we have been blessed with the support from the, all five municipalities. That is based on population. We debated all kinds of ways of analyzing allotment from the number of clients to the number of trees, the number of, we went through everything. The population seemed to be one that municipalities are used to, it made some sense. And then the community has stepped up the plate as well. Certainly, the United Way has been on board from the, as long as I can remember, I think from the very beginning, Michael, and been a strong supporter of the program. The Community Health Board was a supporter for a number of years, and we're constantly looking at other sources of revenue, what other groups in our community benefit from the program that we might be able to tap on the shoulder and say, you're getting a benefit, would you like to help out with it? Our request to the Town of Bridgewater, I know it's part of the police budget, is the same as it was last year, that's the same request to each municipality, with a 2% increase. What we're planning on doing this year is, we have one FTE, Shona is filling in for Chris Acome, who's on parental leave. Chris comes back in September, and we're hoping that we could increase that to one and a half for a period of time. And if we got very successful in securing revenue, even more, because it is frustrating knowing that you can't meet the need that's out there. So we look forward to the continued involvement and support of the Town of Bridgewater, and certainly appreciate everything that you've been doing for this program so far. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further questions before we let them escape? No. Next item is bylaw, de-transfer tax, and we discussed this at a previous council meeting, proposed rate increase. And so if someone is prepared to put a motion on the floor and we can discuss and debate it?
I move that council of the Town of Bridgewater endorse the intent of the amendment to Chapter 188, De-Transfer Tax Bylaw as contained in Document 18-047 and proceed to second and final reading of the bylaw at a council meeting to be held on May 14, 2018 and authorize staff to...
Publish, sorry, that's what I'm looking for.
All public notices pursuant to Section 168 of the Municipal Government Act.
Can I have a second or please? Second by Council Graves. So this increase puts us in line with many other municipal units around the province, so it's, we're not breaking new ground here. We like to in some areas, we don't usually like to when it's increases in fees. Any discussion? No. Pretty straightforward, ready for the question?
Question.
Questions being called, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried, thank you. Council Priority Planning Update. Is, you can do that? Thank you.
Through the mayor to council, so in November, we re-initiated a process whereby we would engage with council on your priorities. It helps us focus on our approach to the budget, and we were committed to updating it quarterly, so we have an update with, in front of you to coincide with the budget. The report overviews some of the accomplishments from the past quarter. We had actually a good couple of weeks there last month, picking up several awards on energy, on some of our project work on the waterfront. We knocked off a number of bylaw projects, taxicats, smoking, and some other, we created a NOD committee, a lot of work around transit, getting some funding, establishing a land sales policy, improving our community energy investment plan, some work around recreation. And in front of you, the next page is the refined focus for the next little while, which aligns with the budget, heavily influenced by the approval of the Economic Development Action Plan, and putting forward some of the now priorities are the execution of our transit operation for this year, our smart cities application, implementation of the Community Energy Investment Plan, working on a couple of downtown action plan priorities, and engagement, some joint and shared services opportunities, completing our infrastructure projects, and refining communication strategy.
Thank you. Questions to the CIO? There's a lot there.
A lot there is, right.
There is a lot there, and I think it's fantastic that we finally have a plan and a path forward. We have talked about economic development and how to do it, this council, the previous council, the council before that. It's nice to kind of have a template so that we know where we're at and what we want to accomplish. So appreciate you giving us the update, and I hope the public take interest in it and they can see that we've actually got a path forward, so excellent. I had to pull out my glasses for the first time, so. As we go to the next item, which is Lunenburg County Senior Safety Program Monthly Report for 2018. Have that before you. I don't know if there's any questions on that? No, it's very interesting, the information we're receiving on senior safety is, I mean, it's alarming, it's, sometimes though, it's great news because we are actually doing something. I don't know how many provinces have this in place. I know that when we implemented this way back when Beth George was the first employee we had for this, it was, we were leading everything, and so now it's, other communities are catching up, which is good because our population is aging, we have more seniors every year, and they need support, so it's nice to see that. So if you do have any questions, you know the two people that you can go to, or you can also go to Council McDonald. Next item is police vehicle purchase, Document 18-051. It's before you, is anyone prepared to put, make a motion? Council Thorburn?
I wish, if I can find it again. I had it on here. Every time I come, I bring my notes with me. Leave it at home, just a second, I gotta read here.
All right.
I move that Town Council of the Town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of the Police Chief and approve the purchase of a 2018 Ford Police Interceptor, all-wheel-drive police package for $29,364, including net HST from Fairley &amp; Stevens.
Have a second or please, Council McDonald. Discussion.
Question.
Questions being called, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. It's nice to see we're getting these all-wheel-drive cars for what we used to pay for the front-wheel-drive cars, so it's kind of nice. There's one more motion there as well, if you're prepared to make that?
I would move that Town Council of the Town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of Police Chief and approve the purchase of a 2017 Dodge Durango for $34,936, including net HST from Dartmouth Dodge.
Have a second or please, Council Graves. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried, thank you. Interim tax bill policy. Hey, Ms. Kaiser, Ms. Kaiser, are you prepared to enlighten us on that?
This is really just a housekeeping matter. It's documentation of current practice with respect to the interim tax bill, so just putting it in policy.
Someone prepared to make a motion? Council Frasier?
Yes, Your Worship, that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater approve the proposed interim tax billing policy as presented in Document 18-052 and implemented as Policy 92 for the Town of Bridgewater.
Have a second or please, Council McDonald. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Everyone just wants to get through to the budget. I know you're all excited. Our next item is Policy 89, Fees, Addition of Field Use Fees, and this is, we've talked about this a number of times, and talking about a field use policy, and, you know, we're going to piggyback this onto some kind of agreement when we get to that point with the school board, and so in having it as a policy too, we're able to change it as we need to update it, which is a little bit more fluid than we're, yeah. So is someone prepared to put a motion on the floor? Council McDonald?
I move the Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater approve the amended Policy 89, Fees, as presented in Document 18-045A, effective immediately.
Have a second or please, Council Graves. Any discussion? No. Hearing none, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Next item is reconsideration of Bridgewater Elementary School Playground Committee Request for Disbursement of Funds. So what we're going to need to do in order to get this back for reconsideration is I need someone to make a motion to reconsider it, and then we'll vote on that, and then we can go forward.
I move that, I move that Town Council of the Town of Bridgewater reconsider motion 18-057 to be added on March 12, 2018.
Okay, can I have a second or please, Council Thorburn? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. So would someone like to put the motion on the floor, and then we can discuss and debate the release of the second half of the funds for the playground? Council Frasier?
Yes, Your Worship, that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater approve the request of the Bridgewater Elementary School Playground Committee as contained in Document 17-002H and disperse the remaining grant amount of $36,441 to the South Shore Regional School Board from BES Operating Reserve for the BES Playground Project.
Okay, so just, my bad, just for clarification, because that, because we already voted on that, and we're now reconsidering it?
Okay.
So the previous, yeah, so Council Thorburn and Deputy Mayor Tanner will be the movers and seconders for it. But I appreciate you reading it because we want to get that out there anyway. So this is the release of the $36,441, which is the second half. Now, we did set that in reserves last year, so it's not new money, I just want to clarify that for the public. Councils had time to ask their questions and I hope received the answers that you were looking for.
Yep.
Are there any other questions?
Question.
Questions being called, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. There you go. Happy, happy construction. Excellent, thank you very much. The next item is the Motorcycle Maritimeers Bike Night Request to be recognized as a special event, and a few weeks ago, we had a presentation for what seemed like quite an exciting event. I think they said, did they say 400, potentially 400 motorcycles down on King Street with vendors, and the money from that going to our skate park, which is very exciting. So I appreciate the linking of those two. Is someone prepared to make a motion?
Sure.
You know where I was looking.
I'm on it. I would move that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of staff as contained in Document 18-043A and recognize the Motorcycle Maritimeers Bike Night on July 21, 2018 as a special event.
Can I have a second or please? Council Frasier was, she beat you to it, Council, sorry. Any discussion on that?
Great to see a new event coming to town.
Yes, yep, and everything that happens on King Street is, you know, it's good. Council Graves?
So there's, we can approve up to five hundred dollars, it says here, but is this going to cost more than that? Closing down the street, other things?
Well, that's a good question, that's a, no?
The barriers and?
No, it's just a bit of staff time to drop them off and pick them up.
Okay, garbage cans, all that kind of stuff, it's all including the five hundred?
No, that's just for the traffic component of it, I guess that I was referring to.
Yeah, okay, because there is going to be other expenses related to putting on an event, right? Garbage cans, porta-potties, I would imagine.
Yeah, so for, for most events, if they want porta-potties and they don't request those from us, they're going to have to supply those themselves. When I think back to the food truck festival that we had down near Shipbridge Landing, we had to secure all those ourselves, that wasn't included, anything like that. It's a good question, though. Yeah, so just a reminder for the public that that's July twenty-first, so that'd be exciting. So ready for the question? Questions being called, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Our final order of business before we, I guess we're going to have a couple of minutes break before we get into the budget, is the UNSM Spring Workshop, which is in Yarmouth, second week in May, I think. So we just need to, to assign some delegates. I know I'm going because we're having a regional economic, urban's economic meeting before then. Is anyone else planning on attending UNSM Spring Workshop?
There wasn't an agenda attached, so it's kind of hard to go to something you don't know what you're going to.
Yeah, and.
So it's.
So we can, because we're voting delegates, if the agenda comes out and somebody wants to go, we need to approve them, so it's not just like in a, like a conference where if there's money in the budget, we can just send somebody. So we could, if people are interested, if the agenda's good, if we approve them as delegates and they don't go, money saved, but I'd hate to not be able to send delegates because we don't approve them.
Yeah, could we approve up to so many delegates and fix their names later, so if you approve three delegates and only you go, then the other two can go if determined later on, and if not, they don't go and then we're still within our budget.
That's a good question. Are we able to do that?
Don't see any issue with that.
Yeah, that's a good idea, that's a good suggestion. So do we want to say three delegates?
Yes.
Up to three delegates?
Up to three delegates.
Okay. Someone prepared to put a motion on the floor? Council Graves?
I move the town council for the town of Bridgewater appoint up the three delegates for the two thousand eighteen UNSM Spring Workshop and approve the associated registration, accommodations and other reasonable expenses.
Thank you, second, your, Council Thorburn, any discussion? Deputy Mayor Tanner?
Does reasonable, reasonable expenses include the additional lobster at the kitchen party? I'm kidding.
They sent something out for that, didn't they? They were pretty quick with what you need. Yeah, we may not like the agenda, but the food is good. Oh, man, okay, ready for the question? All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. We will take a short, five-minute recess because the budget is a timed item and we want to make sure the public will come, they can, they can attend, so we'll just take a five-minute recess. Okay, it is seven o'clock and as we can see, the, the public has funneled in for this budget meeting and so we do have a presentation by the CIO and I'm assuming our Director of Finance will have some comments to make and then I will open up to the floor for discussion and debate and remarks by council. To you, Mr. McQuillan.
Good evening, council. This evening, Don Kaiser, our Director of Finance and I are pleased to present to you the twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen budget for the town of Bridgewater. We've shaped this budget based on what we have heard from council for the past five or six months. There has been a lot of ongoing deliberation and discussion around what is before us today. In addition to the core services that we deliver, there are two organizing focal points that have guided us in this effort, council's priorities and the Economic Development Action Plan. The Economic Development Action Plan approved in January puts forth a vision of Bridgewater as the place to be innovative, creative and thrive through three priority outcomes. The first one is that King Street's a vibrant and thriving place, secondly, that energy opportunities will drive community prosperity and third, that our people enjoy high levels of community well-being. Some of the highlights of this budget include a nineteen point eight million dollar operating and two point nine million dollar capital budget. Commercial and residential taxes are to remain. It's proposed a quarter percent increase in the de-transfer tax. The wastewater rate will be increased by fifteen percent. We're removing the parking levy and reinstituting paid parking downtown. So some of the highlights of newer increased services, so this year, we have full year of bylaw enforcement, we have a contribution to the Field Host Society so that we can work with them towards a sustainable future. We've increased our pavement renewal program by a hundred thousand dollars. We have a full year transit operation and a substantial contribution to a transit reserve. We're instituting a banner program, we're, we've implementing a road and control program that was before council in recent months, a small urban forestry program. We're making contribution to our wastewater reserves and there's support here for implementation of our Economic Development Action Plan and funding for implementation of our Community Energy Investment Plan. Some of the eliminated or reduced services include a reduction to grants to organization, a reduced contribution to the museum, reduction in recreation administration, a reduction in administrative staffing, the elimination of funding for the garden party. There's also been a whole lot of trimming across the board, even council and mayor expenses have been trimmed a little bit in an effort to bring this budget forward. So from, changes from last week's discussion, before you tonight are the Lunenburg County Lifestyle Center grant was increased by fifty thousand dollars and we've offset the contribution to a reserve that we had planned to do for this year. The grants to organizations budget was further decreased with a, with an offsetting increase to a sponsorship budget to give council some, some opportunities, consider some sponsorships in this fiscal year. In the capital budget, a project to put stairs in the fire hall was added, as well as some change to the funding. And with this, I'll turn it over to Ms. Kaiser.
So getting into a little more detail. So some of the details of changes from last year's budget, as Richard mentioned, the strategic initiatives coordinator position has been eliminated. There's a reduction, this is administration, a reduction in the BDA grant, but that's offset in tax revenue because of course those properties have come back to the town, so we no longer will, will have tax revenue on them. And recall that if there are brackets, that's, that's a budget pressure, no brackets is a budget saving. Recruitment transition, forty thousand dollars saving, eleven thousand for an HR advisor. Grants to organizations, as Richard mentioned, has been reduced by twenty thousand. Sundry reduced by seven thousand. The visitor information center, seven thousand and admin meeting pay, six thousand. And some of the, a couple of pressures, the Remo budget is up about two thousand, liability claims, seven thousand. Non-union increases, fifteen thousand. Field host grant that was mentioned previously is a twenty-five thousand dollar addition and contingency, thirty thousand increase. And then the overall trimming, sixteen thousand and then the remainder is small items for a budget-to-budget change of a hundred and seventy-three thousand, six hundred. In finance, we've got the de-transfer tax, a hundred and two thousand. Now, part of that is because we've increased the budget because there's been increasing activity over the last few years. About sixty-six thousand of that is due to the rate change. Residential taxes, net of BDA, seventy-eight thousand dollar increase, but we have an eighty-four thousand dollar decrease in commercial taxes. And there's where that taxes on the former BDA properties comes back to offset the grant. Special reserve repayments, a reduction of seventy-one thousand. Museum transition grant has been eliminated, forty-one thousand, and we've used the museum surplus of forty thousand. In seventeen eighteen, we had a transfer to the undesignated reserve, we don't have that this year. You recall a few, a few weeks back, we bought, brought forward a fee for mortgage listings, that'll be thirty-two thousand in revenue. The cemetery budget is down about thirteen thousand and we've used a portion of the cemetery surplus, thirty thousand of it. Interest revenue up about twenty-nine. Senior citizens housing deficit, that's an increase or a budget pressure of four thousand. We've lost eight thousand on the Grant and Lou from the province of Nova Scotia, that's due to the assessment, an assessment reduction on, at ninety-nine High Street. Federal government Grant and Lou is down fifteen thousand due to a decrease in, in the assessment. Interest on a fall, we have a substantial fall to venture that will be issued this fall, so interest on that up until March thirty-first next year. Transfer from the Capital Reserve, that twenty-three thousand dollar decrease is due to the landfill closure, post-closure costs, we bring the money in from reserve, so there's, there's less cost this, this year that you'll see later, so less, less requirement to bring money in from the reserve. District School Board, our contribution there is up twenty-seven thousand dollars. Capital from operating increases fifty-one thousand dollars, we're trying to increase this every year to reduce the amount of, reduce the amount of debt that we have to issue to fund capital. As Richard mentioned earlier, substantial transfer to the Transit Reserve, a hundred and fifty thousand and a hundred and, almost a hundred and ninety-six thousand in principal payments on long-term debt and increase. And then there are a number of other smaller changes for a net of a hundred, about a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars increase in budget. So police, their budget went up, almost seventy-five thousand as directed by council. Council requested that they keep the increase to that amount and they've done that. Fire, fire was asked to keep their budget the same as last year, they've actually brought forward almost a five thousand dollar saving. Fire protection charge has added some pressure, though, that's the, from the Public Service Commission, is mandated by the Utility Review Board. Engineering, substantial saving in gas, diesel and oil based on history, some savings in snow removal, increase to tree planting, as Richard mentioned, a small urban forestry program, ninety-three hundred dollar increase for the banner program. We've got ten thousand in for the repairs, solar repairs at the Public Works Garage, fifteen thousand for, to review the energy management program and, and make plans for the, the upcoming years. Equipment repairs up twenty-two thousand, I think Larry said that there were tires needed for.
One of the workers. Fifteen thousand dollars for snow tires for one loading.
There's a share of the strategic initiatives coordinator position that's been allocated to engineering, there's, the other, the other part of it has been allocated to transit and then some other smaller savings for a net increase of about fifty-five thousand dollars. Wastewater, as Richard mentioned, the sewer charges were going to increase fifteen percent, that revenue is about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. But if you, you pop down to the bottom of this slide, a hundred and forty-four thousand of that we're putting in reserve for future capital. So that, that's good news, that's the first year for this reserve and as, as we all know, there are some significant capital challenges with wastewater. So some savings in wastewater, equipment repairs and maintenance, chemicals, electricity at the sewage lift stations, a few pressures as well with building maintenance and repairs and materials at the sewage lift stations and then of course, I mentioned the transfer to the wastewater reserves. Solid waste, a saving of sixty-one thousand, but twenty-three thousand of that relates to the landfill closure, post-closure costs, which comes from Capital Reserve I mentioned earlier. Transit, the, an increase in expenditure to move from a, the pilot year to a, a full year, full year operation, a hundred and thirty-five thousand, but we received a two-hundred-thousand dollar grant from the province of Nova Scotia. Planning, we have some savings in a planner position, but we do also have in the budget some short-term assistance. Planning is very busy right now and, and there have been discussions around that. We also have a, a planning intern, which is partially funded by Clean Nova Scotia, this is the town portion of that. Increase in some special planning initiatives, I, I'm sorry, that should, that's a saving from special planning initiatives. Economic action plan, there's been twelve thousand five hundred to do some planning around that and policy and planning has taken on the Heritage Advisory Committee, which used to be handled through the museum, so that was a five thousand dollar increase to planning. And some other smaller changes for an increase of about twenty-seven thousand. Parks, we've got the field user fees that council approved a few weeks ago, going to increase due to, for the park supervisor, but that's offset in other areas, other workforce reductions and we've got some music planned at Bitchin Whiskin Park this summer for thirty-five hundred and then other miscellaneous changes for a, a net increase of forty-seven thousand. The LCLC increase in the operating grant of about nineteen thousand, but a, a small decrease in venture interests, so the net increase is about thirteen thousand for LCLC. This is the capital budget summary and, and just, I'll pop, just mainly go through year one, two point nine million dollar capital budget, funded a million, sixty-one thousand capital from operating, debt is down to six eighty-six five, gas tax, seven hundred thousand. The Capital Reserve, which is something that was discussed at the last meeting, the, the payments coming in from the operating fund to pay those loans are two hundred and ninety-three thousand, so we're going to use that for capital. And the other government funding relates to the Community Energy Initiative. And just a note there that years two through five are a work in progress. As you know, we're going to be doing some debt, some work on debt policy and, and capital funding policy this year, so as that moves forward, we'll be looking at, at the funding and the projects that we can afford year by year.
So a couple of short highlights of the capital budget is the increase in our pavement renewable program, our phase three of our Dominion Street upgrade, putting a hundred thousand dollars into storm sewers, design of the parks' operation facility for future consideration and planning, secondary trails and generations, active park, completion of our skate park, implementation of our Community Energy Investment Plan and recapitalization of one of our pump stations. So with council's improvement today, staff get into two things, one, implementation of what we've been directed to do and secondly, we'll be quickly turning to thinking about our nineteen-twenty budget where we have pressures that we're going to have to start working on, you know, how are we going to fully absorb transit operations, how are we going to bring back reserve contributions for particularly the LCLC? You know, we've used a couple of- You know, we've used a couple of surpluses to help us meet our budget objectives this year that are sustainable. So we have work to do that we'll have to get at fairly quickly, particularly around our wastewater infrastructure renewal and sewer study and our roads renewal. So with that, we have a nice, clear, short motion in front of you for approval of the budget. And, and with that, we're pleased to take any questions or discussion.
Questions from members of council. We've had lots of discussions on this. No, Councilor Fager.
I'd just like to thank staff for the time that they put in and for bringing Ford, our CAO, Richard, for bringing early on in discussions about different, different departments and having those conversations with council early on. So I think it's been a difficult process, but at the same time, you've taken the time and worked with staff to, to bring, bring those discussions to council. So I just want to thank you for, for the efforts and, and doing a good job.
And there's, and the members of council which to speak about the budget. We normally do kind of go around. Just, I guess, a question. What led to the change in the LCLC budget? Was it capital items or...
Oh, I can speak to that one, sure.
And I, I ask because it makes me very, very nervous that we're, we don't have a reserve for the LCLC. That facility is aging rather quickly, as fast as it can, I get. But I'm nervous that there's going to be a major item go in that facility, and where's the money going to come from, so.
Because we can both answer it. The first part is, yes, we made changes to the capital because items that were in the capital budget were operating. They were for operating. And so they didn't belong in capital. And so the decision was made, as kind of unsexy as it is, to put them in operating because it does make the facility look like it's got a larger deficit. The reality is that's where they belong. So in, there is zero capital budget at the LCLC this year. So where last year, we walked back and forth. Mr. Smith and Mr. Malloy had to walk as we debated these items. We don't have that this year. There's only one budget because there were no true capital items.
Did you want to add on to that, why the amount's different?
Sure. There's also, there's, there's two pieces related to the capital and the reserve. Clearly, we had direction from council to bring forward a reserve contribution, which we had put in the draft budget. However, there wasn't enough funding after we dealt with the budget at the, operating budget at the LCLC to do that. We're going to need to do that going forward. We do have other reserve capacity. If there was a, if there was an issue this year that we would have to bring forward to council, this is really about making a long-term policy for, for council and look forward to bringing that back. Basically, the LCLC has one major capital item that needs some more due diligence done on it before it's really brought to the two funding partners for consideration. So with that, I do expect that we'll be seeing only true capital coming forward, but we do need to work on some of our reserves, like the LCLC.
Councilor Graves, just a comment and a, I have a question and a comment. The six thousand reduction in meeting pay, how does that come about? I don't think we have the, I don't remember talking about the meeting pay. It was a six thousand dollar reduction?
So through, through the, through the mayor to council, yes, that was based on projections from last year's budget and projecting going forward. So it was just projecting what we would need.
I think we've been better, too, at, at making sure we're, we're accurately targeting which staff we need at meetings and not having staff that we don't need at meetings. So I think we've just been better. And we can see that when the odd meeting, we just have Don here, or just Larry, or just, or just Jessica, and not the others. Whereas I certainly remember years ago where you just had a full complement of staff, and we might not have talked about anything planning-related, but someone might have been here. So I think it's just, we've just been a little bit more targeted on that.
And then just a comment is in regards to the fifty thousand dollars that were, were, the federal, the provincial, and the school board is charging us. The town of Bridgewater, through Richard and the staff, have done, bent over backwards to reduce their costs. Then on the other side, these three levels of government are giving, are charging it back to us. So it's just a comment. You know, we're working very hard, and Richard and the team's working very hard to save money. And the, the other levels of government are taking that savings away from us. Fifty thousand dollars is a lot of money, which we could put in the transit into the LCLC capital budget, lots of things. Just a comment.
Other members of council wish to comment?
I can say a couple of things. And first of all, I thank Larry for putting in a extra hundred thousand in paving. It's nowhere near close to what we need, probably one-point-five, one-point-six million, but he was able to do that. And I think that will, will make a difference. A little bit disappointed in the capital budget where we brought forward over a million dollars of items that wasn't in there last year for this year. So I'm hopefully, next year, when the budget comes forward, the items that's in there now for two thousand and nineteen and twenty will stay unless we have good reason to move them out. Because we carry over over a million dollars each year, which is typically, since I've been on council the last seven. And normally, the budget that, in year one, after approval, is never as close to the same as it was when we approved the budget. And I think if we're going to have a five-year plan, that's what it's for. And the, the numbers in, in the projects shouldn't change that much because they're high priority and a high number to have them there in the first place.
Others wish to go on, the Councilor Donald?
So last year's budget, I, I left it a little bit worried about what this year held because it, it represented increases in service levels, in new services, and a decrease in commercial tax. We knew that that would put a significant pressure on this year's budget. We were going to have to work hard to make this all work out. I'm very pleased that we've been able to, to balance a very robust, robust set of, of services that address the needs of our residents and enhance the lives of, of the people enjoying this great community. Staff have been very proactive, extremely proactive, and, and helped us reach our goals. And every year, I say that there's, there's just, there's no more to cut, there's no more to trim. And staff get creative. They, they build solutions tailored to Bridgewater, tailored to our needs. And they, they absolutely amaze me year after year. So we, we're going into a year with a budget, an action plan, preparing for another year in advance. I'm confident that we're, we're preparing and, and positioning ourselves well. And that every dollar has been stretched, well-used, and used again to, to create what's, what's, you know, an incredible community for, for young families, seniors, adults, and, and all residents, and even, even our pets are getting some attention.
Thank you.
Well, I was going to wait for a motion, but I guess probably won't do that.
We might as well go through this and then we'll go to the motion.
Oh, look, I'm, I guess I took a little bit of an opposite tact. I absolutely am delighted with this budget. I think staff have done an absolutely outstanding job. And this is where we should have been maybe five, six years ago. I think staff are showing us some real leadership, and I'm really impressed. We have a net reduction in debt. We have some reserves set up, i.e. wastewater, which we've never, ever had before. You know, our tax rate is unchanged. I'm, I, I, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm optimistic of where the town is going. We have a new Community Energy Investment Program. You know, the image of our town has totally changed over the past number, what, two, three years? And I think that will continue to be the case. Our mayor, I know, is going to bring up something that I want to talk about a little bit here. And when he meets with his urban partners, I get eternally frustrated when the province continually downloads more and more. But it's worse than that. They still ignore the fact that most residents in Nova Scotia get a thirty percent reduction in their policing cost. But if you're a town over five thousand people, you don't get that. You know, we have to pay for what I consider provincial roads in our town. We get nothing for those. And so I'm hoping our mayor's going to, you know, carry the torch and fight the good fight. Because that's important, because that's as much as probably around one-point-five to two million dollars a year. Can you imagine what we could do with that? And I think it's only fair. So, but just to recap, I think it's an absolutely wonderful budget. I want to thank staff. It's never, never, never easy, but, you know, we've made what I consider to be some really significant strides in the increase in productivity in our town. And that's really important. So thank you, and I'll start to be supporting the budget.
Now, Deputy Mayor Tanner, I know you just basically asked a question. Did you have any remarks you wanted to make?
No.
All right. Then I'll make, I'll make mine, and then we could put a motion on the floor. I'm going to need my glasses. Oh. This is the year I turn forty-five.
It's an age.
Can't see a thing. All right. So before I begin, I want to thank our incredible staff once again for stepping up and delivering what is indeed a good budget for the people of Bridgewater. And this was not an easy feat, as we've heard from members of council. We set aggressive targets, and very tough calls had to be made. We saw a reduction in staff, a decision that is never easy to make. Our finance team never ceases to amaze. And Don, thank you for your leadership, and thank you for your team and the work that they do. And bringing Mr. McClellan on board as CAO, we have someone who, early on in the process, saw where we needed to be and advised our departments long in advance in order to allow enough time to make the cuts needed to hit those targets. And to all our senior managers and their staff, thank you from all of us, as you've heard. Budgets for towns in Nova Scotia are lean and difficult. But year after year, our staff goes above and beyond the call, and the result is the budget we have before us tonight. I also want to thank members of this council. This is the most progressive and respectful council in Nova Scotia. I am sure of that, especially when you read on CBC what's going on in other councils. We don't always agree. Things sometimes get heated and emotional. But when the meeting is adjourned, it ends, and we leave these chambers as friends and as neighbors. And democracy is alive and well in Bridgewater, and our ser, our citizens are well represented by the people around this table. And I commend you for the effort you put in, and thank you for your willingness to make the tough decisions, to debate the issues, and move forward regardless of which side the vote you're on. As we've heard, every department had to give some, and some gave a lot. Counselors, staff, everyone had to find efficiencies and make reductions, but in the end, that's exactly what they did. And we now have a budget that balances the financial resources of the town with the level of service our citizens have come to expect. Through these challenges and changes, we've been able to add public transit to the town. We've committed to energize Bridgewater in alleviating energy poverty. We've made progress and demonstrated a level of cooperation at the LCLC that I believe has turned a corner in our relationship with the MODL, with MODL, and our partnership in that great facility. None of this was easy to accomplish, but the theme that is playing out here is that, as an organization, we are able to overcome the challenges put in front of us because of our people. So again, thank you, everyone. I will also be supporting the budget. While I may have wanted a little bit more money in paving, and some may have wanted a little bit more money somewhere else, this is a budget that I believe serves the eighty-seven hundred people and businesses in Bridgewater very well. Budget Monday is like council Christmas for me. It's an exciting day that sets a path forward for the coming year. For our town and every other town in this province, though, it is a very difficult time. The way that provincial money is redistributed around the province has to change. Now, let me be clear, this is not a Liberal or an NDP or a PC issue. This is something that is decades old and needs to change. Money needs to go where money is needed. There is a reason why towns don't sit with millions of dollars in reserves, yet rural municipalities around this province do. I think it's great that the municipality of the District of Lunenburg can pay cash for their new building out of reserves. We could never do that because the, the funding arrangement is not allocating funds where funds are needed. That has to change. So this starts with a conversation, and Bridgewater...
Surprise.
Bridgewater will be leading that conversation over the coming months as we invite every mayor and warden and CAO from Nova Scotia to finally have that discussion here in Bridgewater. Not to blame, not to argue, but simply for each of us to bring forward our issues, find common ground, and work together with the province to make the changes that we desperately need. We have an incredible relationship with our MLA, with the Minister of Municipal Affairs, and with our MP. And there's never been a better time to start the ball rolling on this topic. It is overdue, but it is doable, and I look forward to what the year ahead will bring. Lastly, I want to say this. Bridgewater will continue to grow. We will continue to be a leader in sustainability. We will continue to serve our people, putting their needs first regardless of their social or economic status. And Bridgewater will continue to be an amazing community, one that rallies around others when tragedy strikes, one that supports and lifts up those who are in need, and celebrates the success of our people. A community that recognizes that, well, we aren't perfect. We're a pretty darn good place to live and work. So I cannot wait for the next year and what we can do. So with that said, is someone prepared to make a motion?
I will. Before, before I do, there's two things that I must say. And I've only got one word for our staff, and that's awesome. I know the mayor uses it all the time. And I think our CAO made such a difference that the process was so easy. It was never easy, but you made it easy because you gave us the information before we actually asked for the information. So again, thank you, and it's a pleasure to bring forth this budget, Your Worship. And I would move that Town Council of the Town of Bridgewater approve the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen budget, tabled as follows. One, the capital budget in the amount of two million, nine-hundred-twelve-thousand, five-hundred dollars. Funds as follows: one million, sixty-one thousand, capital out of revenue; a hundred and seventy-five thousand, government funding; seven hundred thousand, gas tax reserve; and capital reserve withdrawal of two-hundred-and-ninety thousand. Borrowing, six-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand, five-hundred, from the Municipal Finance Corporation. Two, operating expenditures in the amount of nineteen, nineteen million, seven-hundred-seventy-four-thousand, seventy-two dollars, which includes one million, sixty-one thousand, capital out of revenue; zero transfer to capital reserves; nine-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand, one-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars from town dementia repayment; three-hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand, thirty-two dollars for the LCLC dementia repayment; two-hundred-and-ninety-three-thousand, three-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars, cap reserve repayment; zero transfer to special purpose tax reserve; twenty-one-thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars, transfer to sinking fund reserve; a hundred-and-forty-three-thousand, five-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars, transfer to wastewater operating reserve; and a hundred-and-fifty-thousand, transfer to transit operating reserve. Three, operating revenue of nineteen million, seven-hundred-seventy-four-thousand, seventy-two dollars, which includes twenty-five-thousand, five-hundred, transfer from operating reserve; thirty-nine-thousand, twenty-three-nine dollars, transfer from capital reserve; and fifty-six-thousand, transfer from the special purpose tax reserve. Four, the commercial tax rate to be set at three dollars and ninety-seven cents per hundred dollars of fully assessed value of the property; residential tax to be set at one point sixty-five per one hundred dollars of adjusted assessment value after cap. Six, a special purpose tax for the repayment of the adventure principal and interest for the Lunenburg County Multi-Purpose Center as follows. One, commercial tax rate to be set at point zero-six per hundred dollars of full assessed value of the property; and two, residential tax rate to be set at point six cents per hundred dollars of adjusted assessed value of the property after cap. Seven, the interest rate paid on the capital reserves to be set at zero percent; and depreciation in the amount of two million, nine-hundred-and-fourteen-thousand dollars, which is excluded from the tax rate calculation. And that the final tax bill would become due Monday, October the first, two thousand and eighteen, on. Overdue accounts to be set at twelve percent per annum, cherished at one percent per month.
Wow, that was awesome. Can I have a second or please?
Second.
Deputy Mayor Tanner. Any further discussion?
Just a quick question. Don, can you refresh my memory? What's the payout timeline on the LCLC?
It's maximum of twenty years.
Where are we now? Four. That's all right.
I'll, I'll send it to you.
Okay, thank you.
Ready for the question?
Question.
Question being called. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you very much, everyone. Council, staff, senior managers, please let your staff know that the decisions that you had to make to get to the budget targets that you, that were set for you, those don't go unnoticed. And we appreciate the, the hard work that you've done. Even the chief up there. I don't know why the rest of you can't come back with five thousand dollars of extra money. I'm sure he'll, he'll teach you. There's no other business to come before council. Got the motion adjourned, and we are done.